Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 18th, 2022. Combination. Public meeting and work session of the Planning Board of Village of Southampton. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, let's begin. I have a slight change to the agenda tonight.
Did everybody vote?
Yeah.
Let's open the meeting.
Well is on the board. Well, are you in favor?
Yes, I thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna go to subdivision review for 55554 Hill Street. Because. I don't want to keep Jeffrey here all night long, so I figured we would just pull that up to the beginning. Um, because there are some good reasons for that. We received a revised submission that looks. Very different than the one we were looking at in the past. And basically, our consultants need time to go over that. So we've already talked to applicants counsel and. Are you okay if we say our second meeting in August? I think that'll give us enough.
September. August or September?
September, please.
September? Okay. Second, I don't want to do it the first week in September because that's a, that could be some confusion with holidays, so. We'll go to our September. Calendar.
May I just confirm with Ms. Mark, because I know we've spoken about August, but.
Yeah. The 19. So nothing to vote on there, right?
I'll move that the. Hearing for 5554 Hill Street. Be mutually. Agreed that it be delayed until the meeting planned for the 19th of September of this year. If everyone agrees.
I'll second it.
Can I, can I just weigh in there? Can I weigh in there? Mr. McFarlane said, a public hearing, it actually isn't on for public hearing yet. It's not complete. We're still in the process of reviewing the applications, just so just for clarity, it really is adjourning, adjourning the matter.
During the matter.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kathy.
So was there a second to that motion?
A second. Will, I heard Will.
You got well.
Okay. Yes. And thank you so much. So give us a couple of minutes for councils come out.
Yes, great meeting you.
See you later. Oh, yeah.
It through.
I think I can.
Make your jokes. We could be in Paris with 106 degrees and no air conditioning, so. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so on the. The first but second item on our agenda is 71 Hill Street LLC. And, um. Kathy, we're still waiting for a couple of things, right?
Yeah, I would love to hear from the applicant if they had any feedback from the fire marshal. I have not received anything.
I know that our architect was in, our representatives were in touch with the fire marshal. I know that they provided some additional drawings to him that he asked for. I have not, they have not heard back from him yet. I believe it's worked out, but I, I know that. They submitted some things today even to him. To clarify things.
We've had a conversation today.
So I don't know what the status of that, I can't represent that it's all approved or anything like that.
Okay.
I, I don't know yet. And I think we were also waiting for a report from your engineers as to whether or not the engineering was. The modifications we made in the last submission were okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. He's still looking at them. He said that he's making his way through them this week, so. I, my big question for him is whether there's anything that would require modification to the overall site plan. Before. You know, before this board closes the public hearing, so because then if not, then we'd have to reopen and renotice and so forth, so it's better to keep it open, I guess.
Okay, I don't have anything additional to submit tonight.
Okay, understood. And you're okay with us keeping it open for now?
Yeah.
And.
Well, two weeks should be sufficient.
I hope so. I do hope so, yes, and I will keep pushing. I'm sorry, it's, it's just been very busy unfortunately.
But you move forward to zoning, right?
Well, I'm waiting for a survey. I had. A meeting with, I had a survey to submit. I'm all ready to go to zoning board except. I met with Alex last week and I'm making some revisions to the survey that he recommended for that, so I'm not submitting it quite yet.
Okay.
I'm waiting for the survey.
All right, and this engineer review is a big thing, so.
Right.
Tony, can I just ask two questions? I just wanted to follow up on a cup, two things. One was the set aside for a parking spot for anyone who's pulling up because that was sort of left open. I was wondering if there was any.
It's, we took it off the last plans. That we have plans that we have taken that off. And I think they were submitted to the board in the last two weeks. Just taking off, if they, if they weren't, we'll make sure they get in, but we're gonna take that striping board that was about the guest drop off. Because the fire marshal objected to it, yes.
Okay, and just the.
Willa, did you have something else?
Yeah, the other thing was just, I thought we were getting an update on the affordable housing, whatever the. Board had come up with in terms of an affordable housing plan.
We've been discussing that with the Board of Trustees. And we thought maybe. They would be ready to say something last week. But that's still out there too. But then, you know, I don't know that that has anything to do with closing the public hearing on the site plan. I don't know that, but, but we're still working on that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um. Pardon me. Yes. We have to vote on that. Okay. One.
Yeah, I'll move that. Our discussion of 71 Hill Street. Have the deferred until the August 14th.
A second.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to Heart of the Hamptons 44 Meeting House Lane. The public hearing has been rescheduled for tonight, so here we are.
So we have received the affidavits and they are in order, so did you want to have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'd like to move that we open the public hearing for Heart of the Hamptons 44 Meeting House Lane. Tonight. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Before we start, maybe I'll just ask the architect to. Bring up the plans in case someone wants to refer to them and put them on the table. These are the full size.
Okay.
Which, there are several of them.
That's correct. Thank you.
You can just leave them in there.
Yeah.
So what, just, we're not doing anything right now. We're just getting them up there so that in case we refer to them. You can leave them all together. Um. My name is Linda Riley. I'm for the applicant 235 Hampton Road. Because this is the opening of the public hearing, I'm going to repeat a couple of things, not too much that's been said before because you've heard a lot about it before, but. For the record. I just want to repeat that the Board of Trustees, as you know, authorized a special permit. For this use, the food pantry use. It was granted on March 29th, 2022 by the Board of Trustees. And an extension was, was thereafter granted as was requested on June 27th, 22. So that's still a valid ongoing. A special use permit granted by the Board of Trustees. Under 116-21 of your code. It specifically says that the use is deemed to be a conforming use once the special permit is granted. So I just wanted to remind the board that it is considered a special, it is considered a permitted use. Now that this special permit has been granted. I also want to reiterate that we believe this is a type two action and I believe. The planning board has confirmed that with their attorneys and their consultants. Under six New York Code Rules Regulation 617.5C18. There were. A few. Things that were, came up at the, at the, but basically the plans are before you now. Much as they has, have been in the past. The dumpster location has been changed. We discussed that at the last meeting. Because the building inspector and the fire marshal, more importantly, thought it could not, should not be next to the building. For fire reasons, so. We relocated the dumpster and confirmed with the building inspector to know so that it is. In a conforming location as far as he's concerned, obviously, you have something to say about that on site plan application. There was. An, an issue or some discussion over the handicap space that's been on there, it was on there at the last meeting. So you know, there is a handicap space on, on the premises. And that. Some question about the parking, there is, there are five parking spaces on the lot as there always have been. In addition, we submitted a letter to the. Board in the last couple of weeks or so from the Board of Trustees. You, I hope you all received a copy of that because it was submitted a long time ago. That we have a letter from the Board of Trustees, the President of the Board of Trustees of the church. That essentially, we will always be welcome to park there. It's open to the public now, as you know, I've submitted all the leases, the history of the leases, they come up every four years or so. For the Board of Trustees. But we did submit a letter that says. The Southampton Presbyterian Church has a long and rewarding history of supporting a good worker, the heart of the Hamptons. We're delighted to know they will be carrying out their mission as our neighbors. Including the use of our parking lot. As you know, the parking lot belongs to the church and is blessed by the village of Southampton. We have been pleased to see it used for community benefit as a focal point for COVID testing. We look forward to its use by the heart of the Hamptons for food pickups. In the future. If in the future. The village elected not to continue leasing the parking lot, the church would have no problem offering a lease to Heart of the Hamptons to continue to make it available. We applaud any effort to put wind in their sails and it's signed by the, excuse me, I said President's Secretary, the Board of Trustees of the church. So.
Um, can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
We need to find some water for Lisa. Just give me 30 seconds, okay?
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. As you know. There were some questions about a proposed, an existing generator, an old generator that is existing on the site. I think the plans have been revised, clearly indicated that existing generator is going to be removed. And not, not replaced. We're not going to have a generator outside. The. Food distribution plan was also a discussion in the, in the past, not just the food distribution plans for the clients, but also deliveries. And we did show a. We did show in the past a short clip to the board, a sort of reenactment of how that's gonna work. And we can show it again. We also submitted to the board some written. Diagrams showing how we expect that to work. And because I'm not the one who's gonna be working it, but, but the food pantry itself. I'm going to turn it over now to Molly Bishop to describe some of these. These, these things. And. I'll be back perhaps at the end.
I have a couple of, well, direct questions for Molly probably, yeah.
Oh, from Molly?
Yeah, just, um.
I know where Linda is if I need her.
Okay. I'll let you do your thing first.
So, um. I'm Molly Bishop, the Executive Director of Heart of the Hamptons. We've been before you guys a few times now and the other boards here at the village. This process has been going on for almost three years now. And so we're very happy to get to this point. We have made quite a few changes and concessions along the way to put forward the best possible. Presentation that we can. We're still always open to any suggestions that you have. If there's anything, I like to joke that it's not our house, so we're not tied to anything. We're not emotional about any of it, but. We just want it to operate as best it can for, for us, for our clients and especially for the neighborhood, so. You know, we. We are, you know, happy to be here and answer whatever questions that you do have.
I have a couple of things that I don't have clarity on, even though we've been talking about this for a long, for a long time, but, um. While I fully understand the traffic pattern for clients, I, I'm not sure that I fully understand deliveries.
Okay.
Size of trucks, where, where, how. Unloading will happen and.
Sure. So, um. We get about. We get about eight deliveries a month. We get one that comes every Tuesday. We get one that comes every 10 business days, so roughly twice a month, but sometimes only once a month. Most of the deliveries happen between. 10 and 12 also, I guess, you know, mostly they come around 10:30 in the morning. The trucks are about standard box truck size. They're all outfitted, feet wise.
Yeah, because box trucks come.
20 foot, okay. Provider, so, um, they're about 20 feet. They're all outfitted with an electric pallet loader and like a rear jack that comes down, so.
Lift gate?
Yeah, lift gate, okay, that's good. So then they, they load the pallet and then they lower it on the lift gate. And they drive it, so right now they drive it just to the window in the, in the basement of the church and we have to load it box by box down a conveyor belt. But the idea for us in the new building is the reason why we're leaving the one garage door so that the pallet loader can just drive the whole full pallet right inside. Over the, the flat walkway that, that we've talked about before too, that's right in front of the building. And.
So where will the truck be parked?
The truck, I, I can actually show you because I have a couple of pictures if you want. The truck could park in that same loading area that we would have the clients come. Yep, the deliveries never come on the same day that we give out food. They come on Tuesdays usually or Mondays. The.
Molly? Yes.
Okay. So there's two options really where a truck could park and not even be standing in the, or three options really. I do it here?
Yeah.
So here is the side loading area of the, of the parking lot where we would have the clients come like we showed you in the video and still plenty of room. We showed you with very large SUVs and still plenty of room for two of them to be in that area at the same time. So the truck could pull up right here and unload right over this flat concrete part, or there's a parking spot back here that also has. Like hazard lines, I don't know. But they have these lines here that the ambulance always used to park an ambulance truck there too. So they could park right there in the same, once it's on the pallet loader, it's not an inconvenience to drive it, you know? Or this first spot here, if, if somebody was parked in one of those spots, this first spot here is the same thing and then you could just drive it right here over the flat. Concrete. Um, you know, I mean, I guess technically they could pull into our parking lot and unload, but. We just, we know that the neighbors have talked about, they don't want to hear the beeping of the backing in and. So, you know, we're trying to be creative and think of however ways we can do this to have a lease.
I think my concern is that. Would it ever be anything bigger than a 20-foot box truck? Like what I'm getting at specifically is a tractor trailer, which.
We've never had that. I've been there for 14 months. We've never had a tractor trailer come. So I would say probably no, but you know, it's not, I mean, I guess also too, I mean, the things that we get. We have some say in what comes to us, you know, we have some say in who we order from. And if one of our distributors wasn't. Responsive to our request, we could find another distributor.
Because Alice, is that something that we could put into a document at some point that? That's something we would not be?
I mean, I think it would be unfair to have anything like that documented because like the historical museum. They have party rentals and tent rentals and same like they have special programs that are happening at the church all the time or even just. There's neighbors or businesses that use that parking lot. Also for, for other things and there doesn't seem to be. You know, restrictions like, you know, the historical museum has lots of events where vendors are coming with large trucks, catering, tent companies, party rental distributors.
Tractor trailer sized trucks or? Because.
I mean. You know, I don't know, but not any bigger than the trucks we're getting. I don't know what you would consider.
But the turning radiuses are just, the, the requirements for turning radiuses for a tractor trailer are. I don't know if it would work honestly in, in that space, so that's just, it's a concern that I wanted to bring up.
It's a very large, it's a very wide turn. It is not. It is not a narrow turnaround. It really is. Like, look, you can see on this picture of the building, which is old, it's a 2014 Aerial. You can see that the width of this. Is like almost the same as the width of the whole building.
Right.
This is, this is not just a narrow.
No, I understand.
There has been some talk to try to make it seem like two cars couldn't possibly exist in that space at the same time or that a truck couldn't make that turn, but. He. That part of the parking lot is bigger than the whole.
Understood. Okay. Um. So does the rest of the board have any questions as far as deliveries?
Yeah, I guess, I had a question just about the trucks and will they be idling or will they be parked and then do the deliveries? That, that was my question, which, which sort of is informed by at the preschool that I go to, there's no idling and. So since it's, you know, adjacent to residential neighborhoods, what's that situation or rule going to be, if any, about, you know, trucks that are left running? For any, you know, amount of time, I guess.
They. I'm just going based on what normally happens right now because we don't seem to have a policy on it right now where we are. But they do turn the truck off because then the driver turns the truck, truck off to go and open the lift gate and operate the other. The, um, the pallet loader and I guess maybe for a safety reason for him, you know, he doesn't want to leave the truck running while he's doing all this. Or maybe even the lift jack doesn't work if the truck is idling. I'm not sure, but, um. They do do that, so I would imagine they probably would if we wanted to have a policy that there was no idling, that would be fine too. You know, we certainly don't. Want to encourage idling.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, um, the, the second issue that I, I want to bring up is the, the refrigerator location. Because that's, it's been bouncing around and I don't think we've heard.
Sure. I guess, I'd like to talk about it too because so originally when we submitted it, we thought we could make it adjacent to the building, really tucked in. And then, uh, once it was. Uh, once it was attached to the B, building, it became part of the main structure and so we didn't need the setbacks for. The primary structure. It only needs the setbacks for accessory structure. So we moved it to the rear yard. It's still tucked in behind the hedge and behind the building so that it's not visible from the road. It, we added a walkway so that we could, you know, use like a handcart to bring things back and forth easily into the stockroom. I know there has been some talk about moving it to the rear yard. Personally. I'm not sure why that would be asked for because there are two other neighbors in the rear yard. So then it feels like we would be moving even closer to three neighbors and. And the neighbor just to the. East of us, their pool is more in their far backyard, it seems like from the surveys and so. Um. I mean, we are open to whatever you really think is best.
Why can't it be inside?
So inside we need every, every inch of square footage. If, if you don't approve it for outside, we just would have to try to make do with refrigerators in pretty much every room the way we have now. If you'll see on the drawing, this is one of the things that's been updated was so that you could see how the inside would lay out. Since most of, you know, what we talk about with the planning board is the outside of the building. We didn't, you know. We didn't outline every shelf that we would need to store food, but these shelves here represent the shelves that we currently have. But these shelves here represent the shelves that we currently have. Um, and we don't have the space uh to give up inside. To be able to accommodate having the walk-in. Um, so we really. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that if you, if you really, you know, were opposed to any exterior location. Like I said, we would um, have to figure out some other way to make do. And one of the things that we do now is we just begging to restaurants and they're slow and asking if we can store stuff. We need to, so um. We don't think that there is a problem with this, we've proposed secondary screening all around it. And there already is about a, probably a ten foot um, very mature private hedge there. That is owned by the village um and maintained by the village. And um, like we said, we don't think you would see it from anywhere else in the neighborhood. And we proposed to do a remote compressor that would be inside so that. Um, there, the noise factor wouldn't matter where it is.
So that's a definite, the um compressor is gonna be remoted into the, inside the building.
We did look into the water option, like we talked about a couple meetings ago. And it wasn't possible, it would have had to been directly connected to a a water tower. It's not, it, it's like the compressors that they're using for water aren't um. Advanced enough to do this without a really strong water source.
So there'll be. No noise from this refrigerator being outside, it's just gonna, as if there was a shed there, but it's refrigerated.
Yeah, exactly.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's developed along the way, to make sure that we comply.
It's sort of been ping ponging around and I never, I don't really know where we ended up with it, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have input or questions on refrigeration?
Well, just Tony, on that point, I just wanted to ask, is, I thought the status of that is you, we were looking into. Or you were looking into whether there can be a remote compressor, but is that something that you've established can? And is, is, are you comfortable with that as a condition if we granted the refrigeration outside?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And you know, I guess initially, I was thinking that that east corner where that you have it on in the plan might have been. Closer to neighbors than if it was more to the west. But if it's, it, the compressor was what I was concerned about.
Exactly, it won't have any noise uh no matter where it is. Uh, we think we can screen it best there. And like we said, um, you know, some of the spots in the backyard now, we're adding in two more residents.
Right, understood.
And so. Didn't want to, we wanted to avoid that.
Okay. That's, um. Those are the only two things I needed clarity on for tonight unless the board has anything. I don't have any further questions, no. Okay, all right, so, um.
Is it okay if I um, come back up to address anything else that maybe you said later in the hearing?
Yeah, I think it's time to open this up to the public and is is there anybody in the audience up for this application? Just a few, right? No, that that wants to speak on this application. Okay, um, why don't we just start from the front and work our way back? We, we just need your name and um. Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Stephen Jones. You're representing some of the interests of some of the neighbors. Uh, I've given you memorandum. Address is one eighty-eight South Ocean Avenue, Bayport, New York.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm a professional planner.
Okay, and can you tell us why you're here on behalf?
Uh, I'm here uh with Anton Boravina. Who is representing some of the neighbors.
Can you tell us which neighbors?
No, I don't know.
Okay, maybe Mr. Boravina should go first then.
May I give the board a supplemental memorandum that I delivered the email earlier today? I have hard copies.
We know who you are, Mr. Boravina, but if you could just identify yourself.
Before I intend to, I just wanna.
I, I printed it out in my office already, so I don't wanna, I wanna try to save a treat, but does anybody else want a hard copy?
If anyone needs a copy, I have it here, okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Anton Boravina. I'm an attorney, my office is located at two twenty-five Broadhollow Road in Melville. I represent Jim McCarlin, um, Kimberly Allen and others. Uh, who are located proximally to where forty-four Meeting House Lane is located.
Um, I think Kimberly Allen lives on Potato Field.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I represent James. A minor technicality, uh, but it's important to know, thank you. Um, before I, before I speak regarding thi- this matter is I. I'd like to call to the board's attention something that's very important. The decision that you're about to make is gonna be applicable for as long as forty-four Meeting House Lane is being used as a food pantry. You have heard words said by Heart of the Hamptons, a fine organization. It was said orally, by the way, but with the decision you make today in connection with a site plan. Is gonna be applicable not only to Heart of the Hamptons, but also anyone else who takes over the property. And continues to use it as a food pantry. And in that regard, what do we have and what, what will the world see from this planning board five years down the road? Should a problem arise, one way or the other, good or bad? We're seeing a host of verbal representations. We heard the representative of Heart of the Hamptons tell us on one hand, she really doesn't know. How delivery trucks are gonna be coming in, she doesn't know even by the way in terms of, in 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 terms of to what extent. Certain things ought to be located within the building, I'll give you an example. She has said, Heart of the Hamptons has said several times that the use that it currently has at the Basilica. It's gonna be the same use, they're not enlarging it. Meanwhile, the barn where forty-four Meeting House Lane is located, I know members of board are fully, fully aware of it. Is larger than the basement that they were using in the church. Why can't that, why cannot the refrigerator be located on the inside? Which is one point I have a more serious point to raise, but how is it possible that they need every square inch? Mindful, they said several times verbally. And I wager, I guarantee, guarantee that one year down the road, they will repudiate and deny they ever said it. And that is, we will not be using the facility greater than the intensity that it currently occurs at the Basilica. They said that verbally, that's not binding, this board is, I respectfully submit, is gonna be. Responsible to know and your successors will be responsible to know when issues arise as to why. The use of the forty-four Meeting House Lane has caused problems regarding its parking and other operations. How did that come to be, what conditions were imposed? And I respectfully submit that the conditions that are verbally, the statements that are verbally said here do not count, do not count as conditions. Now with that in mind, I'd like to now address certain critical matters regarding the application for site plan approval. As the board knows, on March, uh, the board sent a letter to the Board of Trustees on March seventeenth. Twenty twenty-two, this is a consequence of a meet, special meeting that the board held in the middle of March at the recommendation of the Board of Trustees. Uh, the, 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 in the letter to the Board of Trustees, I'd just like wanna, wanna read certain provisions of it. Um, uh, the chair indicated to the, to the Board of Trustees. That the planning board is concerned about the traffic and traffic flow that will be generated at the subject premises. In connection with the proposed food pantry use and will request that the applicant provide a detailed plan during site plan review. So what detailed plan has been presented? Well, before the board is a site plan. By the way, my memorandum includes copies of the actual site plan as well. The site plan consists not only of forty-four Meeting House Lane as it must have, but it also consists of the adjacent parking lot. Owned by first Presbyterian Church. The applicant, Heart of the Hamptons, does not own forty, that, that, what I will, what I will describe as. The church parking lot, it's owned by somebody else. And the question be, and and the Heart of the Hamptons is on record as stating, and it's McCarlin noted this by the way, it's the time of the meeting. Uh, it's reflected in the minutes I might read on March fourteenth. A concern about traffic and how parking will take, how parking will take, will take place. Part of the Hamptons has no control over the parking or any kind of situation that's occurring on the church parking lot. Other than verbal representations in a letter that, that the applicant just raised regarding, oh, we promise. The church is thrilled to have Heart of the Hamptons use forty-four Meeting House Lane, and we promise, we would like. We, and we, we, we welcome indeed to have, have Heart of the Hamptons use our parking lot for that purpose, I'll get to that. But that's the only representation that the board, that the board has. Now, in the minutes, as reflected in the minutes that was held on March the fourteenth. The board set, submitted its letter to the, to the Board of Trustees, this board submitted its letter to the Board of Trustees. Based upon representations that the Heart of the Hamptons made at that time, what were they? Well, they're referred to in the food distribution plan, it's actually Exhibit C to my memo that I gave today. You, I'm sure you have a copy of it already, one of the first things right off the bat, uh, with respect to Exhibit C, with respect to um. The distribution, I'm quoting from the quote, food pantry distribution hours are Wednesdays and Fridays from ten AM to twelve noon. Well, that's in this distribution plan, I see it in writing, all of us see it in writing, it's in plain English. Where is, how is that representation, how is that representation gonna be binding? With response, with respect to how Heart of the Hamptons uses the site, the instant you grant the application. Two minutes later, they can repudiate that promise, that, 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 that representation that they made, two minutes later. And you, and in the absence of a condition that limits Part of the Hampton's ability to use the property. Will mean, will completely undermine all the questions, Mr. Chairman, you just had. And other questions I'm sure you will have regarding issues.
Okay, um, we have a lot of people here tonight that wanna speak, so we just gave you five minutes.
Oh, I know, yeah, five minutes.
Well, no, I, I mean, I'm trying to be generous, but.
Certainly, alright.
Um, maybe just get to your point within the next two minutes. Cuz I think we're hearing you, we, we, you know, all of this is.
Now, by the way, the, 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 I called to the board's attention, provision in the village. Um, it's Village Code Section one sixteen thirty-eight D eleven, it states. This is a requirement of all site plans with respect to where the applicant is not the owner of the property. In this case, the applicant, Heart of the Hamptons, is not the owner of the church. It says a statement shall be placed on all site plans approved by the planning board to the effect that the owner. In this case, it would be First Presbyterian Church, agrees to comply with the plan and all conditions noted thereon. Okay, the owner or a bona fide representative shall be required to sign such statement, it provides such guarantee. It must be a guarantee, not a handshake, and a letter is, does not suffice as a guarantee. Before any approved plans will be released by the planning, by the planning board, the rest of the sections you could read, you, you, what could read for itself. The, the, there is no representation to that effect, and by the way, how can there be? Because in the, until you know. How they're gonna be using the food pantry, when they're gonna be using it, the hours of operation. You really do not know if and to what extent that church parking lot will be available, not only to Heart of the Hamptons, but it's to, to its successors as well. By the way, with, um, I, after I speak out, there, Mr. Jones, who is the former chairman of the Suffolk County. Uh, Planning Commission and a member and former commissioner of buildings in Isla. And, and himself a member of their, of planning board who will be speaking, as well as traffic engineer Steve Schneider. He'll be addressing more about the, some of the questions, Mr. Chairman, you asked regarding the ability of delivery trucks to service, to service. The uh, forty-four Meeting House Lane and to use the church. Um, you know, in, in, interesting, interestingly enough. The issue of delivery trucks, um, you know, there is no representation. I heard by the, the trucks will only be twenty feet. I think the applicant, she, if I may, not, not, not misquote her. She herself, if you listen to what she says, she really doesn't know what, 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 what delivery trucks are gonna be coming in. She's gonna, at best, she'll tell the, tell the village after the fact, perhaps after an accident has occurred. That a certain delivery truck was allowed to come in, and then she can certainly not speak for successors of the Heart of the Hamptons. Who, who are not aware of a limitation on delivery trucks and other things, including, including use of, and including hours and days of, and days of operation. Of, the, the. I know, I don't, I also know that in, in the past, there has been a comparison made with the, with the Heart of the Hamptons use. Of the Basilica located at Hills. And there is, there's simply, and Mr. Schneider will be addressing this as well as, well as Mr. Jones, there is no comparison. You cannot compare the configuration size and location of the Basilica and the parking lot available there. And the service, and the service road that available, that, that, that is, that is, that is available there. And if I may, regarding, by the way, regarding the um, uh. Uh, documentation for, for delivery trucks, we heard the representative say, well, the Historical Society after you use it. After all, use the church parking lot and other people use the church parking lot. There is a world of difference between a, a food pantry operation that has the regular service of food. Versus the Historical Society's use temporarily with respect to the church parking lot. And um, what about the refrigeration unit? Mr. Jones will be speaking about that, I'll be including just less than a minute, sir, I appreciate the.
About in less than ten seconds.
Uh, thank you, uh, with respect to the refrigeration unit, that you, they need every inch of space. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I heard, and I think the board heard numerous times. The operations at forty-four Meeting House Lane will conform really to exactly what really what happened at the, at the church, at the church. The, the refrigeration unit is located on the inside of the church there, they have, they have more space, the board is giving them. Forty-four Meeting House Lane is giving them more space than what they, than, than what they currently at.
Okay.
With that in mind.
Thank you very much, you've been heard. And your correspondence is all in the file and in the record.
I, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate this for your patience, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Jones, I missed your first name, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I've submitted memorandum to you.
Oh, wait, let me just say one thing before you start, we're gonna give you three minutes, okay?
Uh, I've submitted memorandum to you in April, May, um, saying and concluding that this is a bad location. I'm now here tonight to say I think it's a worse location. And that's as, as a result of, of reading in the Associated Press. That because of the economy and inflation. Food banks all over the United States are seeing a huge spike in uh, people who need food. And there's no question about it, this is happening all over the country because of. I can't believe that Heart of the Hamptons is gonna turn away people because they don't have enough room. There at this new location, so I just, I'm, I'm, I hope you'll, you'll take that into account. I wanna say a word about shared parking planners like me, love shared parking. It's a virtue, it's a beautiful thing, let me, let me give you an example. Um, let's say somebody wanted to uh take Brian Grady's building over there up by the CBS parking lot. On, across, o- over near Dunkirk, and you wanna turn it into a big restaurant. And he comes to you and he says, CBS, people say I can park there, I don't have to put in any kind of parking lot in the back. I can have, I'll, everybody will park next to. I can virtually guarantee that you would not take a warm and fuzzy letter from CBS. You would wanna see an easement or some other kind of legal device saying that they could use. The part that is uh, new restaurant could use the parking lot. So it's really nice to hear that Presbyterian Church is second to none in their admiration for Heart of the Hamptons. But I think you're gonna need something a little more than that. And lastly, just let me say, I sat on a planning board just like you did. And the elected officials in the town, where I was, always said, oh, let the planning board deal with the details. We, we, we don't, we're, we're just gonna approve it and let, let them figure out all the details. Well, I, I feel for you cuz you got a lot of details to work out. Uh, not only is there not clear site control, but you have this outdoor refrigerator. Uh, not only is there not clear site control, but you have this outdoor refrigerator and you have. Uh, functional design problems that Steve Snyder is going to get into. So I really urge you to uh, turn down the site plan and let part of the Hamptons find a much better location than this one here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Schneider.
Me. I'm an attorney, so I get more time.
No.
Uh, don't stop the clock yet, please. This one will be something, uh. There were, there was a package that was dropping off for mail emailed to today, which included my latest report. Which included a drawing like this.
Okay, that was part of Mr. Orvina's. Okay.
That is correct, showing trucks and why they can't make it.
Okay.
Their engineer didn't do this.
Okay.
I don't know why, but that's not an issue.
What is that like a turning radius study or something?
Exactly what it is.
Okay.
I knew you were going to ask. Uh, this is also a copy of my bullet points that I'm to say today, but I have some additional ones I'll start with first.
Okay.
Based on today's hearing.
Okay. Um, I think we need you to sign in at the podium.
I want to do that.
Just.
So hey, my name is Stephen Schneider, Schneider Engineering. Forty-three Seagull Avenue, another place near Oklahoma, seventh former licensed professional engineer in New York State. Florida and New Jersey for a lot of years. Okay. Um, I'm I'm just going to bypass some of the items that I had there, as I said. Uh, first of all, a twenty-foot truck is just slightly larger than a car. Okay, I can't see twenty-foot trucks bringing produce and 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 farms and farming items, et cetera, into a smaller lot like that. I just don't see it. What I did there was I presumed it was a thirty-foot truck. A single unit truck, not a uh, a a truck with with a bunch load of, you know, additions to it. Okay? Uh, so I'll mention that that's in there. And now and you'll look from the drawings on there that the great turning radius does not work. Because once you're backed up a couple of spaces, just a couple of of cars. You now can't get any cars to bypass those trucks, for example. To go around the lane uh, and it's supposed to go counterclockwise. That's the way it's set up. And it physically doesn't work. My drawings, my report shows that they have had no engineering work at all on traffic safety. Zero. Uh, secondly, um. Uh, they mentioned about a parking spot on the northeast corner of the of the site. That particular parking spot is actually an illegal parking spot. Because if you're backed out of that parking spot, if you look carefully, you go into the pantry's property. There's not enough aisle room to back out of that one tickler spot. I'm only bringing that up because they said they were going to use that spot. Can't be used. As a matter of fact, some of the some of my drawings also show, uh, as I said, that many cars would have to be moved or removed. In order to make those turns with the thirty single unit trucks. Uh, also, what was interesting was that. Currently, it works where they are today. If you're getting if it's available or not, it works. There's no traffic issues. There's no safety. There's no turning radius. There's no. Uh, worrying about getting getting onto the street, backing off, uh, backing out onto the streets from their site, which you can't do. Uh, you sort of back your truck out. Can't do it. Trucks cannot go in those fire spaces. Because if they do get into there, those cars cannot get out. Alright, so setbacks are not there, um, turn movements, et cetera. They're all in this current places. They have, including queuing. They can queue as far as they want, as long as they want. There's no traffic issues there. Um, they didn't do any traffic counts at the parking lot. Why wouldn't you do a current traffic count at the parking lot to show how many parking spaces are being used or not? That did not make sense to me. That's the first thing I would do. And they, you know what? They had plenty of time. I got ten seconds and I'm done.
Okay, ten seconds.
Um, uh, the the pantry site, okay, I I I know I'm done. You have all my information. You understand where I'm coming from, and I've been with fifty-two years. I have an idea.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Um. I'm sure. I just want to clarify, uh, usually the size of a delivery truck refers to the size of the actual. Unit, not the overall length of the truck, so.
And Eric goes on the delivery truck.
Oh, let's have all the comments. Um, Mr. Stanley, who's on our board, also provides us with photos that we get each week and is the owner of the truck. I feel confident in his assessment of the size of the truck. Um, I just wanted to bring up. We have a licensing agreement with Southampton Village. Southampton Village is the property owner of that building. They have oversight over us as their tenants. It's not like. We we should get in there and now we can do whatever we want with the building or give it to whoever we want. It specifically says that we can't turn it over to anyone else. There is no successor to this lease. We it is bound only to us. And it also has two ten-year review periods. And even in between that, we are bound to any village law or any village code that they would want to. Pass themselves. I mean, they are the landlord of not only that building, but they are also the renter of the parking lot. Um, and they have also said that they wanted to make it available to us for as long as we need it.
I I think that this board understands that very well. Just, okay.
Now, um, I wanted to clarify too, um, none of the representatives that have spoken against our application have ever come to the Basilica. Have ever been inside our operation. They, um, square footage that we currently have at Sacred Heart is larger than the square footage that we're proposing for the ambulance barn. But we can accommodate it if we, well, if we declutter a little bit, but also if we do have the walk-in and we have use of space a little smarter than we have now. The parking circulation and the parking uh. Would be a net negative to the neighborhood because uh, right now it's been operating for the last two and a half years with higher volume coming to the hospital. And the parking lot itself is larger than the parking lot we have access to at the Basilica, which also has forty-eight. Uh, full-time teachers that park in that parking lot. And so forty of the sixty-two spots are are automatically taken every single day from eight to three PM. Um. And we don't currently have a walk-in at the Basilica. We have many, many refrigerators and standalone freezers.
Thank you.
Oh, I also would like. I think you guys have for the record, the traffic analysis that was done at the request of the Village Board of Trustees.
Yes.
And remind the board that that is a nationally recognized firm that did the traffic analysis going both ways. In October of twenty twenty-one, not during the shutdown of the building. And that um, they equated the traffic that we would bring to the neighborhood essentially as um. Trying to find a penny in the ocean because there was already so many cars that went back and forth along meetings.
Is there anyone else from the public?
I just want to say, I'm, my name is Judy Maisels. I live on Pelletro Street. I'm just more concerned.
Sorry, you live where?
Pelletro.
Pelletro, okay.
I'm just more concerned about Meeting Houses and Job's Lane and Main Street. And people and pedestrians and walking in nineteen and twenty twenty-one anyway, there was, and the cars were not what what they are. Now, but you know, forget the trucks even in the parking lot. It's getting to the parking lot, getting in. Traveling across Main Street, down Job's Lane, Meeting House. They're both almost one-way streets now. And that's where I get nervous. And I would love some confirmation that that's going to be safe for the people. Who are driving their little cars against the big trucks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, um. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
Fine, um, Dr. Joseph Super, sixty-four Meeting House, Maine.
Would you mind spelling your last name, partner?
Uh, S O U F U. I wanted to give my, it's it's been summarized by many people already. Those of us who live in the community that the issue is really location. It has nothing to do with our sensitivity to the goals of heart of Hamptons. In fact, uh, the the strategy that was initially started was that the neighborhood was not caring. About their plans or their mission goal, which I find actually quite offensive to make that implication in that strategy. People in terms of.
Can we ask you, please, address your comments to the board?
Absolutely. Um. And I think they started the wrong strategy, but now with more details coming out with regards to, for example, the traffic pattern. There is an ambulance uh, that comes from the east west to go to Southampton Hospital. So there is traffic there. Um. Uh, there's a bus line that comes on little planes and goes on Meeting House as well. So there is. That component of it that hasn't been addressed in any way. Uh, I was glad to hear that the compressors are going to be inside. And hopefully there won't be any noise because that is a concern. Um, and I and I feel that the, not this board, but Board of Trustees has been very responsive to. A business versus the residents who actually live on the neighborhood. And our issues related to all these other factors that was expressed by the attorneys with regards to. The traffic pattern, et cetera, all of which is an unknown. Because both sides are trying to make a case that there isn't going to be very large trucks versus the turning. Those things I'm not familiar with, and hopefully you folks have that insight that we don't. But ultimately, I think the decision has to be made based on the needs of the neighborhood as well. It can't be solely on one business coming in that has been told. By the Board of Trustees that there are multiple other areas, such as at the train track, at the train station. Fire station on Flying Point Road, uh, and the former kindergarten on Major Paths, just to name a few places that they could have gone to. This is being in a very, very congested area. So it's unclear to me why, unless it was politically motivated somehow. Where it was advantageous for the Board of Trustees to accept something like this. Uh, but I I leave that as a question mark. But I hope planning board at least looks at those other alternatives that was brought up to the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Sean Hattrick. I live uh, at sixty-nine North Bishop's Lane in Southampton. I am on the board of part of the Hamptons. And I also happen to work at UBS Financial, which is on the corner of Meeting House Lane and Main Street. So I park every day in the parking lot. Uh, that you're all referring to, that we will occupy. I just want you to know, I I also happen to grow up on Hill Street, so I'm acutely aware of the traffic of heart of the Hamptons. That's an exaggeration. I've never noticed traffic because there hasn't been. And I, you know, it's obvious, but I will remind everybody that Hill Street turns into Job's Lane, Job's Lane turns into Meeting House. So what has been going on in this village for forty years successfully without a peep from anybody on Hill Street or Job's Lane or Meeting House? Is now just going to be going on quarter of a mile east of it, on the very same corridor. I drive into that parking lot every day in the morning. I leave every day at least once. At lunch or, you know, if I go fishing and then when I come home, I will tell you that. You know, nine months out of the year, there really is not a very big deal coming in and out of that that parking lot. The traffic, if I do notice it, is in the afternoons at three thirty, you know, four thirty. Um, I have never gotten to the office early enough to experience the trade parade there at six thirty in the morning. But I can assure you, part of the Hamptons will not be there then. Um. And. I just. The idea that. I need to express to you also that that building was created um, through donations by a guy named Hans Lobes about forty-five years ago. It was not the village money that ever built it. It was donations from people like us. And that will be continued. Um, we are also receiving donated money and we're going to renovate that building. We're going to spend several hundred thousand dollars making it back to what it was forty-five years ago and better. And it's just hard for me to imagine that building has been an ambulance. Everybody that lives on Meeting House Lane. I don't know about everybody, but I'll I'll say nine out of ten of you all bought on that street after it was an ambulance barn. And for all of you to imply that somehow heart of the Hamptons is going to be more annoying. Then, and I used to drive for the ambulance too, so I'm aware of exactly what happens. So when they pull out, the sirens don't go on every time, but they go on a lot of times. When they come back in, the side that the beeper goes on. You got to back into those spots. So I just cannot imagine. And that is at three o'clock in the morning. That's at four o'clock and you tell me the day and I've been on a call at that hour. And so I'm just, it is frustrating. You all imply, not you. The the people, I've heard it over and over again, that everybody supports heart of the Hamptons. They just want them to go somewhere else. And they've represented that we had other options. This is the only option we have. Financially, we are not made of money. I I I'm not a mercenary. Not one person that's in support of this is making money from heart of the Hamptons. It's offensive to even imply that. But there is nowhere else to go. We talk about the place out on uh, Norse. Oh, the old school. I happen to go to nursery school there. There's no way we could afford to buy that. The school wasn't willing to sell it, and they've got taxpayers that would not allow that to just be given to us. This building isn't given to us. The village is still going to own it. We are going to renovate it. And we are going to op- operate in it faithfully. You have our word, as I said to the Village Board. We are not here to make the people on Meeting Houses lanes lives miserable. We're here to make you all proud. And if heart of the Hamptons can't go there. You are basically saying they can't go anywhere because there is, we've been at this for three years. We can't do it again. And there's nowhere else to go. You can't afford it. People may imply that there are other places, but they are boogeymen. They don't exist. And so anyway, I just needed you to understand a little bit of the history of that spot, a little bit of the history of who we are. And also a forty-year history of never offending anybody. Not once. I defy you to find somebody on Hill Street that ever complained about our existence. And I think five years from now, you will know that the same will be true of the people in Meeting House Lane. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Rose Stewart. I live next door at fifty-four Meeting House Lane. And I just wanted to thank Molly and the team and the architects for really listening to me last year. Talk about some of my concerns and really address them. I really appreciate it, actually. This is the first chance I've had to hear about the. Remote compressor. I've been going to the building department. They didn't have a copy of any of the new plans. I've been looking, but there's nothing there with all of what was talked about tonight, so I appreciate it. I don't know where the garbage is exactly from what you guys were talking about tonight, so I'd like to maybe look at that and understand that. I'm really glad it's not under my kids' windows and the vermin and all that that would be attracted to a dumpster. That's great. That won't be there now. That's great. The um, the reason I decided to stand up was to just ask if it's possible um, to talk about the hours of operation in some sort of. Uh, formal way and and a document, talk about the hours in a documented way. That way, everything that everyone's talking about can just, oh, it's relief. We we have that written down. We're only going to operate from this to this. And then when there's special activities like lemonade stands and, you know, cake, you know, things to raise money for whatever. That just goes through the normal things for special events, you know, like I do for beach permit. Um, so that's why I stood up and thank you very much.
So I just want to make it clear, you live right next door?
Yes, I do, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Jim McFarlane from Wind Dance Lane, Southampton Village. Obviously, this is a losing proposition for we property owners on Meeting House Lane. And we also understand difficulty of having to make a decision in rather a sensitive area. I thought I would just bring up briefly a a couple of comments that Mr. McFarlane made. During that special meeting that you had with the only topic being heart of the Hamptons and a letter to the board. The letter to the board was like giving them a little extra step so it could reach up a little bit higher. And Mrs. Riley did speak for some time, over five minutes. In fact, it was about an hour. But she did a great job. And I kind of feel that it's. But she did a great job and I kind of feel that it's, I don't know, I can't justify you're telling someone they can speak more than three minutes, but this is all really petty stuff. A sensible practical solution would be an area where there's plenty of traffic access, a chance to expand and in a business district, there is one little spot and that's what we're buying for the Southampton Town School District, which is the old Marin office building on Hampton Road. And if somehow the heart of the Hamptons could be integrated into the rear of that, they've got an eighty seven spot parking lot. They got three access roads. Uh, what else do they have? It's only a couple of hundred yards from the school. It's only a couple of hundred feet from a bus line. And the business district again is the business district and not a residential. So I don't think it's going to come to fruition. I'm wasting my time, but if everyone got together and supported Art of the Hamptons into that building, it would be the ideal spot for, in my opinion. I realize it's not going to happen.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just say?
Yes, please.
The um, one of the things that Mr. McFarlane just said about the school. It wouldn't be a terrible idea for us to offer a a remote pickup there if the school was willing. And I'm just saying, other food pantries do have satellite locations at libraries and schools and things like that, so that not as many people do come to them. And we certainly would love to be in a position to start to offer things like that in the future, but right now, right now, we're pretty limited in what we can do where we are and also put a lot of energy into just trying to operate as best we can where we are. But expanding into satellite locations, not expanding within our own current location, if that was ever needed, would be something that we would be interested in. But I also I also wanted to just say that that part of the Hamptons is serving a vital need for our community. And like Sean said, we have never done so in a way that has brought any complaints or anything like that. But we are meeting a vital need that that has become more and more evident over the past few years and the partnership that we have with Southampton Village. Well, you know, will benefit the greater community for the entire length of that lease agreement.
How long is the lease agreement? I should know this. Three years?
No, it's thirty, but it's really three ten years.
Yeah, every ten years it's up for.
Yeah, it's up for renewal.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to weigh in? I'm sorry? If you come up to the podium. Oh, wait, did you speak already?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm Harry Stavelli. I live at ten fifty five North Sea Road. I'm here representing First Presbyterian Church. I'm an employee there and a lifetime member of the church. I go to work at the church every single day. That parking lot is sometimes filled, but not always filled like Sean was saying. It is, I know, and and people like it because because, you know, the church is open for other activities, like the historical museum uses our parking lot when they have their sales or their vendors come. We are really looking forward to Heart of the Hamptons being across the parking lot for months, I have to say. Um, it has been really been talked about and discussed throughout the church the past couple of years and some of us have been board members. I think three of us have been board members. One of our members is a volunteer every week giving out food. So we are really well aware of how this organization runs. They don't just like throw food out there and people just come piling in to get food. They're very organized. We've organized the toy drive, Christmas toy drive at the church because they didn't have the space for it. We opened our doors to them during the pandemic. And um, I have to say that that there was so, there was so organized, people would come with a card. They would have a timeframe, they could come in and they could really have the respect and the dignity to choose a toy without people looking over their shoulder. There wasn't multitudes of people running through grabbing toys or cars pulling into the parking lot. It was all scheduled in a timely fashion. I don't think anybody probably in the neighborhood realized that we were hosting a toy drive in the church. But there was probably over a hundred people that came to get a toy for their child at Christmas time. And we are quite proud of the fact that we've always supported Part of the Hamptons and we're glad they're going to be across the parking lot because we would like to open our doors to more and more events or things to help them out if we can. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Um. So I guess that's it for tonight. We're going to keep it open for a little while longer or? I don't think we need to.
I just want to confirm with Nelson Pope who's on Zoom that there isn't any more information that was raised tonight that would require these mittles that would require input.
Kathy, did you hear that?
Yeah, so could, can we bring John Ellsworth in, who's also on the Zoom call? He's been working on this.
I also forgot to ask if there's anybody in Zoom that wanted to speak, so we should check before. Okay, thanks, Kathy.
I just brought John in. So, John, if you could unmute and put on your camera, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm sorry I didn't hear the the question.
Actually, the question was if there's anything that hadn't, that was brought up this evening that would need to keep this hearing open, if there's anything new.
Uh, I didn't hear anything. I think all of the questions that were posed were answered. The submission from the objectors was pretty much what we had seen previously, just repackaged. Uh, I would like to point out that Mr. Schneider's analysis was based on a queue in the church parking lot of four trucks. And from what I heard from from Molly Bishop was that they rarely, if ever, have more than one truck in the parking lot, so they can use that area at the east end of the parking lot, as she pointed out. Uh, so I don't think that's an issue and I don't think there was anything technically that's still open.
Thank you. And still no one with their hand up to Zoom. Alrighty, um, so I think it's okay to close the public hearing. Does the rest of the board agree with me?
I agree.
And we do that by motion, correct? Okay. I'd like to move that we close the public hearing for Heart of the Hamptons forty four Meeting House Lane, Southampton.
Second.
All favor, should we do a formal roll call for this? Okay, Anthony, do you want to take over?
Sure, Ms. Cowell, how do you vote?
I.
Ms. Claire, how do you vote?
I.
Ms. Bernstein, how do you vote?
I.
Chair, how do you vote?
I.
And Mr. McFarland, how do you vote?
Um. I I vote I because, as I tried to say before, and I went to the trustees' hearing, the only time I appeared other than being asked by the trustees to participate in a vice letter from the board for their decision. As counsel noted, I went to that hearing to say that I thought the trustees were not necessarily making a wise decision because of the issues that have been, are before the village of concentration of activity there. Because my experience indicated that the trustees prior had gotten upset with concentration there, they claim. Very upset by moving the ambulance department out of there at great expense to the taxpayers and getting a referendum to pay for it, to move it away to even more difficult street. And it didn't necessarily solve it on occasion. And we were dealing with traffic, which if you travel there as frequently as I do, I'm I'm behind Sean. I've known him most of his life. He understands, no question. I even made donations to Hans Wolf's when Bill adults along just be there. I've arranged tens of thousands of dollars to other people for the Heart of the Hamptons and I know many of the board. I'm all in favor of it. But there's no question that it's a good idea. But I, my point was to the trustees that they were not necessarily showing the maximum wisdom in putting there at this time without some precaution for the interruptions that they will have to deal with depending on what happens post-COVID. Four months of the year roughly.
We just need to close this vote though.
No, but so therefore, I would like to abstain, but I think in view of the likelihood that Molly will make the changes, that the board will make the changes. I will approve this subject to our resolution going before the board that they have to do something substantive in the management of this, particularly at certain times of the year for the community. The management is going to be crucial. They've made these decisions before. It's going to come back to haunt them. So I will vote yes, subject to the board hearing from us. It was approved by us and we don't need to do it. It's their decision. By the way, legally, I don't think this is the planning board's matter.
So you think you're okay with closing the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Okay.
But I would like to, Chairman, you tell some friend you have on the board, other than the ones I tell.
Okay.
They may have screwed it up.
I just want to know if we're closing the public hearing right now. And I think we have a majority vote on that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being so respectful and move on to the next. Hey, so, um. Yes.
I don't have. John, you don't have to stay on for the rest of the meeting. Okay, thank you. I.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too, thanks.
You do not have Sam Portis up here.
I know. This is stamp.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Today's eighteen.
Thank you.
It feels very lonely in here all of a sudden.
Everybody left.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Let's hope it wasn't a super spread, isn't it? Okay, moving right along. Six eighty nine Halsey Neck Lane. Um, public hearing's been closed and is pending a decision. And we actually have a conditional resolution before us tonight that we could approve if the rest of the board feels confident that they fully understand what's going on and there are no more questions. So, does anybody have any concerns? No. Willa?
No.
Okay.
There was no access issues in this one. It was just a matter of their legal lot subdivisions, right? We did, we had no issues. Yeah.
No access issues.
Okay. Yeah, I had no concerns.
Okay. Um.
I can't get the stamp to work. Building Department letting us stand high and dry.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
There is.
I'll move that we adopt the resolution on Harry's land.
Okay. Um, I'll second it. Okay, thank you, Lisa. I'll second it.
Second it.
And I think this is pretty official, so we should have a formal roll call.
Sure, Ms. Cowell, how do you vote?
I.
Ms. Bernstein, how do you vote?
I.
Ms. Claire?
I.
Chair?
I.
Oh, and Mr. McFarland.
I.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. We have a couple of minutes that we can approve.
Oops.
No, we don't.
We do. Um.
Just not on here.
Not on here. I got to check the dates.
Nick, you're right. What the building department does is not necessarily linear.
It's the minutes of six twenty and seven five. And I know that Alan has viewed that. So, um, can I get a motion to approve the meetings from June twentieth and July fifth?
Uh, yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve those minutes from.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second it.
All the favor?
I.
I.
Well, should I?
Okay, the eyes have it, um. Any discussion on, while we're still open on anything other than we discussed already tonight?
Mr. Chairman, can I mention something?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to mention to the board that the trustees have scheduled a public hearing for review of the comprehensive plan that's going to be at the end of August. So very shortly, that that plan is going to be posted online. If anybody would like to review and make comments on it, including the planning board members, the planning board, you're free to make comments on that and provide comments to the trustees at that hearing. So that'll be an opportunity to take a look at that if you'd like.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, no problem. I'm sorry about the the oversight with the files earlier. There was a miscommunication in our office today with some absences. So we'll make sure that you have the files available to sign, Tony.
Okay, is this document that you, um, Alex, that you prepared for us, is this legal, like?
I wrote original on it.
Okay.
We'll just need, if you could sign it and we'll record the vote.
Okay.
It's like you got a little line, you know.
Okay.
You need to feel like saying the words.
Inverted lefty. So Alex, I'll drop this off or someone will drop this off tomorrow. Um. Okay, I have some exciting news to report. Just, we started another bioswelling in cooperation with the Lake Avalon Conservancy this week, so that's very exciting. On Linden Lane.
With the bottom of there.
Yeah, and I'm just, I just want to say that I'm really proud of Southampton Village and its residents for stepping up working on environmental issues.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, the general bioswale is not under that, it just isn't.
No, we won't talk.
Well, I'm just saying it's good, but not perfect.
Not in the right direction.
It's affirmative, not not so good.
Okay. Um, so I'd like to move that we close the meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.